And the first order of business is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and being televised, so please silence your mobile devices if you have them. We'll get right into the agenda today. The first item is public comment. Does anyone in the audience have anything they want to address the school committee about today? Seeing none. Our next order of business is recognition, and I think Ms. Barzak, you going to make the presentation? Come on up? Sure, absolutely.
Yes.
You wanted to just learn that?
The guest of honor, considerate there.
This is Lauren McDonald, nurse extraordinaire from high school. So you have the letter from the Mass School Nurse Organization. Lauren was honored on Saturday as the Massachusetts School Nurse of the Year for 16, 17 school year. And the four components that they looked at were significant contributions to health of our children, expertise in school nursing practice, model creative use of resources, and excellence in health teaching. But what I more wanted to talk about was how Lauren started at the high school in October of 2011, and she followed a nurse that was there for a long time, Ginny Folds. And Lauren worked her way into the fabric of the high school community, and she, I would ask her, "What are you doing on the weekend?" Well, I'm going to chaperone a dance. And she just did such a great job getting to know all of the staff, respected her, and she developed really great relationships. She'd stay late, "What are you doing now?" And now she was on the committee for reviewing national honor society applications. And she, last year, some students asked about, you know, "What is it like to be in health?" And so she worked on being the advisor for a pre-health club. And she brought in speakers, a physician friend, to talk about what it would be like if you chose health as your, you know, career path. So, yes, she does all the things that school nurses do, but she really went above and beyond at the high school. And this year, she applied with an English teacher to be the class advisor. So Lauren is the class advisor for 2020. So today, with the freshman class, there were balloons in our office because they're decorating the cafeteria, and she just told me she was at Fuddruckers before she came here for a fundraiser. So she's really, really ingrained in the high school and really part of that community. With these relationships that she's built with staff, one example that I, that we, that comes to mind is one of the special education teachers was having, asked for some help with some students that were having relationship issues in the special ed class in high school, and personal space issues, and hygiene. And so Lauren took it upon herself to go take a class, see about a curriculum for that. She didn't like that one, so she went to another one, and then went online and found more resources and developed the curriculum bodies, boundaries, and relationships. And has been doing that now for a few years, so much that she's presented to the Northeast Region for other school nurses to use it. They asked her to take that program onto the top program for the 18 to 22-year-olds, and she went there every Monday last year. And now the Andover nurse said, "Can I watch you to model that program?" So she does do a lot of that modeling. The other school nurses use her a lot as an expert for our electronic health record system. So there's, you know, just that whole health teaching component. She introduced CPR in schools for all of our ninth graders in the health class. She's a member of the BRC, the Building Respectful Communities. I could just keep going on and on. And she also precepts a student from Salem State University. And I get emails from the professor that those students write in their journals how great it was to work with Lauren, that they, they are amazed at her communication skills with so many of the staff at the high school. Like Lauren lets a student come with her when she meets with guidance, when she goes to committee meetings, and they feel that it's the best experience they've had. So she just takes everything a step further than, it's great. And most importantly, she connects with the students. She's, they come in and know that they can talk with her about anything. So I'm honored and happy that Lauren's part of our team and got this well-deserved recognition. Thank you. Thank you.
[applause]
I get, I get a little nervous in front of this. But anyways, I wanted to say, especially to Cheryl, thank you, because, first of all, she nominated me for this award, and second of all, for encouraging us, inspiring us, and providing us with the resources to be able to do great things as nurses in our district. She really, really wants the best for the kids in the, in the district, and she allows us to do that, and allows us to, you know, do all these great things. I wouldn't be able to do that without, without having such a great boss. And also to the North Andover High School faculty, staff, administration, families, and students, they make my job easy, and I love to go to school every day. Without such a supportive staff and faculty who really appreciate school nursing and, like, you know, enjoys collaboration with, with us, I wouldn't be able to do the things that I do. Thank you, and thank you to all of you.
Lauren, on behalf of the North Andover School Committee, I'd just say we're extremely proud of you and the work they've done at the high school. Obviously, what Cheryl talked about means a lot to our students and our staff. So on behalf of the North Andover School Committee, we have a citation recognizing you for their, being the recipient of the 2016, 2017 Massachusetts School Nurse of the Year. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's a great way to start off a meeting. Yes, what is time to get a picture? Okay, we need to, we need to take care of the superintendent's Twitter pic.
I need something for my Twitter pic. I apologize, Mr. Gilligan's not here, I'm falling down on the job. There we go. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. Yep, all good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item of business is our student report. Courtney and Cole are both here. Excellent. Okay, who's first tonight?
I'll go.
Okay.
So, last time I was here, I forgot to mention Dr., I mean, Mrs. Holman's contribution to the school. Of course, she's a good principal. She smiles, waves at everyone in the hallway. But she's, she's gone farther than that. She's even come to the Asian Culture Club to talk about microaggressions. When she heard that we were doing the microaggressions wall, she was first to jump on it, and she wanted, she came to one of our meetings to have a discussion about it. Also, we had this poster next to our microaggression wall that had a close to, like, a close enough negative connotation that we took it down. We saw her in that hallway, we told her about it, and she said that she'll find a way to take care of it. The next day, the posters multiplied, and they came back, and they were on the wall. And she did something so amazing. She took one of the posters, turned it around, and wrote on the back of it, "Dear this anonymous group, please come out of your shadows, you have the right to freedom of speech, and join this wonderful discussion," and wrote down the room number and the time and everything, and it was great.
Wow, that's good to hear. Nice to hear.
I couldn't agree more. She is an awesome principal, and I do enjoy working with her as part of student council. I've gotten to know her pretty well, and I, like she said, is, she's a great principal. And also, what I came here to talk about was Spirit Week and how it's going very well. Tomorrow's the last day with the pep rally, and right now, the freshmen are actually in first place. But it's great to look around, it's great to, it's great to look around the school and see, like, on Pink Day, a majority of the school was dressed in all pink, and it was just cool to see the school unified, and it was really awesome.
Also, I want to add on, Mrs. McDonald is advisor for a pre-health club this year also, and she's just been so great. We had this fundraiser, as I told you guys, for the breast cancer awareness, and she's done her best part. She bought bracelets out of her own pocket for us, and she bought another set of them too, and she's just gone beyond with it, and it's just amazing.
Nice to hear. Nice to hear. Anything else? Well, thank you for that update. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah.
Feel free to leave, we will.
They know the routine, they're at the door already.
Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you. Next item of business is our consent agenda, review and approval of the minutes from last week, I believe, October 13, 2016, as they're presented in the packet. Any questions, comments, motions?
Do we have it for approving now?
Yes, we do.
The only addition I'd like or clarification in the presentation on technology, I did want to make mention that we do, at least, I would like to get an update on the privacy and security of the, of the infrastructure. Kind of mentioned that, but I'd like to see the minutes summarize.
That you want another update on it?
That there was no update on the privacy and security audit for the network and infrastructure. So I think that was, that's one thing that we would like to get an update on later.
All right. So we want Mr. Grant back here for, at another time?
Yeah, or just a topic, just to verify that the, the school community networking infrastructure, and potentially even the town, has passed external audit for privacy and security.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So you want to add that, add to the minutes, and you want to have that add to a later agenda at some point?
Yeah, please, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other?
One other thing, Mr. Tracy, just an idea, some of the other minutes from other parts of town, they add just a timestamp here and there. So we happened to have a very long meeting last time. If people were interested to buzz to that topic, if it's possible to drop in, like, when it starts being discussed, drop in a time, maybe. That would make, for the, the four people who go look at the minutes and want to watch the video, they can jump to where they want to be.
I'll talk to Mrs. Garry about it.
And if it's too hard, that's fine, but just, I know that they do it on some of the other ones, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Give me that.
If it's possible, I'm sure she'll do it. It's a lot of work, we'll, I'll come back with that.
Yes, and that's, not looking for more work.
A motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So moved and seconded?
All those in favor say aye. Aye. I'm going to abstain because I was not here, so 3-0-1, that's okay?
You were here in spirit, Mr. Tracy.
Indeed.
In spirit, that's a good segue to the chairs report. I am here now physically, so obviously had a little scare myself, and I want to say thank you to all the staff and teachers, my colleagues here who sent cards and well wishes. Happy to be alive, I should say. So that's a good thing. But, but I know the, I missed a couple of meetings, and I know you guys were in good hands with Mr. Limpert running the show, so thank you for doing that in my absence.
It's great to have you back.
Thank you.
Let's assume that.
All right, just assumed that's how to go to that again. The other items I just wanted to bring up, I got an email from Lori Burzla from the town manager's office yesterday, and I will forward it to you folks later on. But on November 17th, we have a school committee meeting that night, but from 6:00 to 7:30, there's going to be a training on the new public records law that the legislature passed this year, and it goes into effect January 1st. I will send it out to all of you, but KP Law, which is a big firm specializing municipal law, will be making these three informative presentations across the state. This is going to be held at the North Andover Middle School. They're going to do the staff training from 3:00 to 4:30. There'll be refreshments from 4:45 to 6 o'clock, and then elected and appointed officials will be there from 6:00 to 7:30. So I was thinking that we could probably start a meeting hopefully by 7:30, 7:40 that day, night instead, if that's going to be okay with everybody. But I will forward that email later on tonight or tomorrow. And I think that's it for my chairs report. Very brief. Got to ease back into this.
Okay.
Over to you, Madam Superintendent, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, just a reminder, October 26th, it's 6:30 PM, that's next Wednesday, is the professional teacher status and Hall of Fame evening at the Rotunda at Stevens. So you're all welcome to come. It'll should be a really nice and hopefully not too long event, but we are going to acknowledge everyone who gained professional teacher status within the North Andover Public Schools this year, and have Kevin McCarthy talk about our Hall of Fame recipients. I'm hoping it's a nice marriage of those things, so just a reminder. And then just three quick things. I sent an email out yesterday about two of them. The Live Your Learning Education Fund Dinner is November 5th, and just anyone out there, it's going to be a very fun, exciting evening with the hopes of raising money to ensure that all kids in the North Andover Public Schools can take advantage of our outside state experiences. And then I also sent out a reminder, and just want anyone watching, early voting starts Monday, and it's incredibly important. I think November 8th is going to be a very packed time at the high school. Our staff will be there for part of the day, working very closely with the town clerk about all of, trying to make this happen. So if you can vote early, you can avoid the stress that will be November 8th at North Andover High School. So the town, the schools are very invested in supporting the voting, voting early, so just wanted to let folks know that. And then last, but not least, I had a fabulous visit today to the North Andover Historical Society with the second grade from the Kittredge Elementary School, and it was really fun to watch kids make butter and go into an old-school classroom. I think they like our classrooms better, I would just say. At least, I hope. And to kind of see how folks lived here in North Andover so many years ago. So it was really fun, and it was great that Kittredge could walk down and take advantage of that wonderful resource, so that was a fun part of my day today.
Making butter for years down there.
And I wonder, Dr. Price and Mr. Tracy, if you wouldn't mind if I could comment on something?
Sure.
One of our citizens brought up last week. So we had somebody come and discuss a concern that they had with regards to some of the special education busing, and I just wanted to let you know and ensure you that myself and my staff are on that and doing some observations and working with that, so we're looking to resolve that issue, just to give you an update.
We'll sound out in a minute. Great, okay. That's it?
That's it. Not too long.
Not too long. So moving right to all business, the FY '17 budget status report, usually given by Mr. Mealy, but I know it's sometimes going to pinch it effectively.
I'm going to do my best.
Yes.
So, you know, I just, this is a traditional report that we have. In most cases, it's 15% is kind of the number in terms of how many, where we are. You will notice that the biggest expenses for us are district-wide, and if you look at the largest expenses of salaries, in general, most of our professional salaries are around the 15%, as we've talked a lot. Some of them, like the clerical, get higher because they walk, work 12 months, so then there's some other line items that are higher because, like, salaries other is often money that we use only in the summer. So it's not surprising that that's at 75%. And then all of the other parts of this are, you know, different buildings have used more or less often, the number is higher than the percentage you would assume at this time because a lot of things were bought in advance for the school year. So, does anyone have any questions?
Just one quick question. Traditionally, we would also see impact in special ed funding in terms of move-in, move-out evaluations. It looks like the added district tuition is close to in line, maybe a little hot, but is there an update or?
Yeah, so, you know, we decided, because Mr. Mealy was not here, to do that level of detail, but I can tell you, having spoken with him, that where we are right now is right where we anticipated we would be. Our feeling is if we have no other expenses, which we all know will not happen, that we would be right where we need to be, not dipping into the contingency at all. So anything from here on out is going to have to be around the contingency. But that right now, with this, if we assume a 72% circuit breaker, which everything I'm hearing from this, from Beacon Hill is that they're not impacting state or, I'm sorry, local or school district aid, that we should be okay. So where we are right now, now, I will also tell you, and Dr. Straight will talk about it, we are in the process of bringing some students back too. So that might mean that we are able to offset any additional expenses of kids going out, but we are right where we anticipated we would be. Nothing massively surprising this summer. And if they are, we'll talk a little bit more about that as the night goes on. We're trying our best to keep those kids in district.
And nothing in the queue? I mean, no students have to rush?
Well, I mean, it's always challenging, Stan, because we're.
There's always students in the queue. It's a matter of, as Dr. Price was saying, is the type of work and the type of efforts that we put in, working with those students, really looking at the types of programming and services that we have. We're going to hear from a couple of our staff members this evening with regard to the type of work that we do in district to try and maintain our students and provide them the best possible education here in North Andover as well. Oftentimes, the surprises are really the move-ins that are your big surprises.
However, it would be disingenuous to say there's nothing in the queue, given that we are involved in a few mediations, et cetera. So we need to be sensitive to acknowledge that, but not discuss that in any detail.
No, I understand the only, and the reason I bring that up is, you know, a couple of years ago, this sort of stuff kind of snuck up on us.
Yeah.
So at this point, we are not feeling like we would have to access, but remember, we were very thoughtful last year in accessing only $150,000 of the contingency, so we are able to access up to $250,000 this year. So we are feeling very, at this moment, that could change in two weeks, but at this moment, we are feeling like we are in a place that we are being fiduciarily responsible.
I just had one question about the budget update. These are numbers that I'm just curious about. Between schools, why does the percent of, on the salaries, why is it a little different? I would think it would be sort of almost all the same because everybody's been at school the same amount of time. Any thoughts on that, or is that, let's wait for Mr. Mealy to come back, and he can explain that?
Yeah, but I would also think that they might be close to the same, but given that we're talking about different levels of experience and different compensation levels. So, you know, just as an example, one custodian could cost X, one, another custodian could cost X plus.
Or the teacher's complement.
Correct.
Yeah, a group of teachers at a school. Good answer. Good answer. Okay.
Good. I'm good. Ms. Mayble?
All set?
All set. All right, thank you. Another matter of old business, which you folks took up, I was pointing the knife, actually, when you guys took this up, the facilities use and fees. I know there was a discussion about NAMA moving the bleachers. My understanding is they didn't move the bleachers anyway, so it's kind of a moot point at this point. It rained, it poured, yeah. But I still think it's important that we address the issue on a consistent basis going forward. You know, I definitely had some concerns about it in the previous years, and I expressed that to Mr. McGrath as well this year, that I wanted to take a look at it. So if it's okay with the membership, I propose we form a subcommittee to look at this issue over the next few months, get back to us in the spring what they really well fought out conference of policy on how we're going to deal with the waiving of fees. Because as great an argument as, as Mr. McGrath and NAMA make, I can see other groups making, you know, similar arguments. And with that, I've asked Ms. Mayble, and since Ms. McDebit's not here tonight, no, I asked Mr. McDebit, actually. I should apologize, Mr. McDebit couldn't be here tonight, he's going to have to send his apologies. But I've asked the both of them if they would take on this, this issue, and both readily agreed to do so. So if I could get a motion to form a subcommittee consisting of Mr. McDebit and Ms. Mayble to examine the facilities and use fees.
So moved? Seconded?
Moved and seconded? All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, is there a discussion? Yeah.
Actually, I already moved up some of the existing stuff, so.
Yeah. I do appreciate you stepping forward and being willing to do this, because I know it's not an easy, easy subject at all, so I appreciate that. Okay. So that's, that's that on old business. Now getting to new business, Lucy Cockings writing program update, Lorraine Marks, world-renowned public speaker.
Yeah. I saw them earlier. So before Lorraine starts, I just want to say that, you know, before I was even officially the superintendent of the North Andover Public Schools, I was involved in the hiring of Lorraine Marks as our, our humanities coordinator for the district, right? And I have just been so impressed with what she has been able to accomplish in 16 months. And the passion that you bring to this work and the vision that you bring to this work, I really am confident that North Andover is going to be one of the leaders in literacy, writing, and reading instruction in, in the state. And I really think, you know, you have a great team around you, you're not doing this alone.
No.
But all great teams need a strong visionary, passionate leader, and I think we're so lucky to have you in this job. And I think that you guys are going to see tonight just what we've been able to accomplish, and the passion that Lorraine brings to this, and the concept that this is not, you know, just one thing. This is a holistic approach to have kids, all kids, which is also wonderful. All kids learn to read and write, skills that are so critical to kids' success. So, no pressure, Lorraine, but you're so impressed. Thank you.
And I feel so fortunate to, to work with someone, and frankly, and as I've said to you a number of times, I have learned so much from you, and it's just so great to be able to learn from you too.
Well, I continue to learn every day from the teachers here, the kids here. As, as Jen said, I have a great team with me, which includes our reading interventionists, our coaches, the teachers that are in the schools, our special needs teachers. I spend Thursdays, one, one hour of my Thursdays now is co-teaching in a partial inclusion class with the writing, so that I can learn more about how to help include all of our students in the process. So that teacher was open to, to that, and that's great for me too, so. So a lot of, a lot of great people supporting this, so. So literacy updates, so a little bit about all things literacy tonight. Okay, so next slide. So we'll start with the writing curriculum. So just an update here, all of our K through 5 teachers have the writing units of study. Some of our special needs teachers who have partial inclusion programs, so they may spend a chunk of their day with students in their room, also have kits. So for example, the teacher I just mentioned. Our special ed inclusion teachers, last June, I met with them just to talk a little bit about what the writing was going to look like, what the expectations were for including all students in that instruction in the general ed classroom. I talked to the ETLs. So we're really looking at our students on IEPs, unless they have, you know, significant disabilities which are going to prohibit them from being able to participate, students are not pulled out of the classroom for writing instruction. We're meeting students where they're at and really differentiating, which I should say goes both ways. When I first, my background is also special ed, I think many of you know that. But when I first went to school for special ed, it also included gifted and talented education, so this really, this runs the gamut. So if you have a student in fourth grade, but you look at the, what's called the writing progressions, and it looks like they're at a sixth or seventh grade level, the teacher has information there, how to push that writing forward, which they might not have had, you know, all of those really concrete kind of things to do with a student because they were a fourth-grade teacher. So it's really great on both ends. Homegrown Institute, so that's out of Teachers College at Columbia University, and we have had some homegrown institutes over the years, so I think we started probably about three or four years ago. Obviously, a lot of Thompson teachers did it then. We had some other teachers that did it as well. We ran it the next year, and in those, those years, we were able to pair with Reading, which made it more cost-effective because they only do it during the summer because their staff developers are actually in schools during the school year, which is wonderful. This year, Teachers College would not let us do that, so we were only able to run the 3 through 5. We didn't really have enough people in the K through 2 to make it cost-effective. So we had a full house here for 3 through 5, which is great. I did it again, I did it a few years ago, learned more and more each time. And then we came up with this homemade institute. So this is our version of the training for all the teachers who, over the years, weren't able to go to the other trainings. And I heard that the video ran last week, so.
I watched it at home last weekend, couldn't hear it, you could see it very well, but...
Couldn't, couldn't hear it, so may have to get that up on the, is that?
It's up. It's up, you can get that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sorry. Everyone watch it again at home.
Must see TV.
Yeah, right. So, so the last two weeks of September, we did pair with Reading, which helped our substitute coverage, so it was beneficial for both districts. And myself, the two coaches here, Jackie and Ann, and the literacy coach in Reading, Tricia, spent a lot of hours this summer, in September, planning this. Every day, we revised as we went. Each day, it might have been a little bit different in terms of timing and needs of the teachers there. But, so for two straight weeks, we were training teachers, so we trained at least 120 teachers in that amount of time. So, and the teachers, the feedback that we got was very, very positive, so it was really, really, it was, it was a great experience for us, as much work as it was, and as nervous as we were about that, the feedback was really great. So we also did a couple of administrator trainings. So during the admin retreat this summer, Jen and I had talked during, well, the school year last year, really, about providing some training for the principals, because it's hard to go in and do a walkthrough or evaluate a teacher on something if you have no idea really what that looks like. So we spent a good chunk of one of our days during the retreat this summer doing some training with the principals, watching some videos, having them take notes if they were doing a walkthrough using that video, so they actually had some of that experience. doing a walkthrough using that video, so they actually had some of that experience. And then on Monday, a whole group of us went to Sturbridge. Lucy Cawkins herself was speaking about leadership in the schools, if you're using the units of study and the workshop models. So Jen was there, all elementary principals were there, our coaches were there, our assistant principals at the elementary level were there. Karen was not able to be there, she has a death in her family, so, but she had every intention of going. And we also had someone from the high school, our ELA academic coordinator was there. So it was really a great experience for all of us. And we also, last week, spent some time with our elementary facilitators of collaborative inquiry, because on the 26th, which is a PD day, it's one of our two-hour district days, each building is going to be looking at the progressions and the rubric for grading student work. And we're taking them through a protocol regarding a norming process for looking at that work. So we did that with the facilitators, and they will replicate that in their schools on the 26th. So, yeah, we're busy.
Yeah.
So, so foundations, more literacy. So as you know, because we couldn't run the K through two training for the writing, approached Jen and talked about maybe starting to look at that foundations piece, because that early literacy is really, really crucial. And I'll kind of mention that a little later when I talk about a book study that we did as a reading team. But that whole kindergarten, first grade is really important to get those skills there, and we really just were not hitting the mark. As I said, my background is special ed, I used to help a number of districts set up language-based programs in their districts. And the districts that I saw use foundations, and you can probably speak to this as well, we would see a big decrease in the number of language-based referrals because it was very systematic instruction for those kids. So when we learned that we could do this, the coaches and I went out, we talked to teachers in our district who were still using foundations kind of undercover, not doing the reading school. There were... ... practices. You know, you have people who develop these programs or these curriculums, and they say you need to do everything with fidelity, but what do you really need to do? What's going to work in our district for our students? So we spent a lot of time looking at that, and at the end of the school year last year, we trained all of our kindergarten teachers. And then we had a very generous gift from a parent in town to purchase all the foundations materials for first grade. So, surprise, we had to figure out what we were going to do. And I think at that point, we were kind of like, oh, my gosh, writing, kindergarten foundations, how are we going to do all of this? What's going to be too much for teachers? How can we support all of this? But as the summer came and we kind of looked at that, we felt that it wasn't fair to say we had this material and give it to the teachers without giving them the kind of training that they were going to need and having them know how that fits into the whole, what we're calling the literacy block. So the writing piece, the read aloud piece, the phonetic piece, the comprehension piece, all of those pieces of literacy that go together. So on September 16th, we trained all the first grade teachers in foundations. So, and they have their kits, and I will tell you, I was at Sargent this morning, and Ann, who is one of our coaches who does the reading, some of the reading intervention at Sargent, said that what she sees with the first graders coming in, she works with the first grade group, and just the difference, like they, they'll say, oh, I know what these cards are, I know how to use this. So they're already into the routine, they're familiar with this, and so it gives more time on task and more practice. So we definitely anticipate an increase in our scores and, you know, looking at the data at the end of the year, that it's going to look much stronger than it has in the past. So we're very excited about that. A lot of the teachers are very excited and on board that we're getting back to foundations, so it's nice to hear. And it's, you know, for us, like you're always, you know, so we've done this, it's happening in the classroom, so to hear the reading interventionist say, the kids are coming and saying, we're doing this in our classroom, I know what you're doing, I know how to do this, is great. So that's foundations. So continued professional development and support, so we are working on what we're calling coaching cycles. So for the foundations, primarily Ann and Jack, you're going to be going out to K and one teachers, probably, so kindergarten, their first unit, which we got them all set for is about 13 weeks, and they started about the second week of school. So we're going to be going out soon to help them get ready for the next unit. First grade, first unit was a little bit shorter, many of them didn't start till mid-September till we did the training, so we'll be going out on that soon as well. And then for the writing, we're splitting it up. So Ann is going to do kindergarten, first grade, Jackie is going to do second and third, and I'm going to do fourth and fifth. And so the principals have been sending me their grade level collaboration times, and we will be setting up times that will be going into all the schools and offer that support for the teachers in terms of developing new units. Student work, so I had mentioned just the facilitators of collaborative inquiry, looking at student work, we're going to continue to do that, because that's really going to guide where the teaching needs to go. We have the district PD day, so later in the year, in the spring, what my plan is, is to have some vertical meetings within the schools, so the kindergarten teachers can say, this is what we've accomplished this year in each of the genres, the first grade, second grade, all the way on up. Transfer that to the middle school, and in fact, last year, I met with a high school ELA team, because the progressions for this writing program go right up through ninth grade, and we shared with the, the high school English department what they should start to expect as we move through this. We're looking at doing some pieces of ed camp on January 13th, so maybe a little, we don't have it all figured out yet, but maybe a little more structured in terms of some of the time. So we have some teachers in district who are doing a fabulous, fabulous job in their classroom and can help teach and share what they know with other teachers. So we'll be looking at getting in touch with some of them and seeing if they'd be willing to facilitate some groups that day. We have not yet, but we will be planning on a teaching assistant training, so that, and we say we want all the students in the general ed classroom, well, if the teaching assistant is there, they're going to need to know what to do with those students as well. So that's on the agenda, not scheduled yet, but it's, you know, it's there. And then some more training for special ed teachers. And all of our inclusion special ed teachers have attended a homegrown institute, which is really great. So, and a number of our reading teachers did as well. So that's what we're looking at. We're also hoping on, just still in terms of PD and support, we did our first walkthrough at Franklin, and we were able to look at some classes that were doing some writing instruction. So we're talking about doing some more walkthroughs, maybe me going into buildings with the principal and walking through those classrooms and helping the principal to notice what they need to be looking at and, you know, how to help facilitate conversations with teachers around what's going on in those classrooms. So PD in that way as well. Okay, reading intervention team. Whoops. So, the reading intervention team, so those of you who've been here for a few years know that we lost most of our reading support a few years back. All we had was our Title I teachers, so we had a teacher at Atkinson and a teacher at Thompson. So we've been slowly regaining some reading intervention support, we got a little more this year. And I meet with them on a monthly basis, so I met with them last year, and we really looked at trying to bring some cohesiveness to the team. One of Jen's goals is bringing cohesiveness, especially amongst the elementary schools, so the writing curriculum, the reading curriculums are going to do that. But also in terms of what are we doing for intervention and how are we working together? From, you know, what data points are we using and what testing are we, are we using, to what letters are we sending to parents, what do they say, and when do they go out? And how does that, you know, is Title I different than reading intervention, all those kind of things? So last year was really a lot of time just kind of working through all those kinds of things. I think we're there, I think everybody feels comfortable with that. We did do a book study last year, and it was that Green Book, Annual Growth Catch-up Growth, it was really around literacy. And that's where we, our reading team, decided that we wanted to do those kindergarten bags. I think you guys are, you're familiar with them. So, because that had to do with that whole early literacy piece. So when parents brought their students, their children, to the kindergarten in the spring, they went home with a bag, and every bag had a book. So PTOs were generous, the group in Lawrence that deals with early education, they also gave us some money to help support that. So that was one of the things that came out of our book study there. So this year, we're doing Visible Learning for Literacy, which is really interesting. This is John Hattie and then Fisher and Frey, and they have this, he has kind of this barometer of influence, and he says that, you know, kids can go to school, and most of them are going to learn something, you know, most teachers aren't going to do any harm. But part of that is developmental and kind of just maturation, but how many kids are really making a year's growth in a year? And so that's what, that's what we're going to be studying in this book this year, and it talks about relationships being important, it talks about feedback, what kind of instruction you give and when. So, you know, we've talked about this in some, some of our meetings, is it whole group or small group instruction, what's better? Well, they're both good, it depends on the time. Do you want surface learning, deep learning, inquiry, transfer, all those kinds of things? It's about timing when you do that for the students. So our reading team will be studying that this year. And what's exciting is, reading intervention, there's no, there's no like magic bullet, there's no magic curriculum, there's no magic program, it would be great if there was. But it's really a lot of trial and error, putting our heads together thinking, so we are going to be doing on a monthly basis, presenting case studies and putting all of our heads together to see what we can do to help the student, you know, the case with the teacher, and see if we can come up with some good solutions and work as a team around that as well. So, I'd say, oh, and I wanted to mention, we also have a fabulous intern from Mass General Hospital who's working with us. Mass General is one of the best programs around for reading. She's also a speech and language pathologist, ABA, she'll be special ed certified, so she's a real gem, and she has been outstanding. She's attended all the training, she helped us with the facilitator training. But that's another really educated, skilled person that we have working with us right now for a time. So that's been great. So, let's see, I think that's it on that. So then literacy, more literacy. Jacqueline Woodson, I think many of you should, I hope, have heard that we're doing a one-author, one-community event. So, and our author is Jacqueline Woodson. I actually heard her speak in New York City a few years back, and she was just phenomenal. I think her books are wonderful. She is a National Book Award winner this year, she is a Young People's Poet Laureate, which is very impressive for one person to be both of those. And she is also now a finalist for the National Book Award this year as well, which will be announced on November 16th. She will be here on November 28th. So it's quite exciting for our community.
And Ms. Marks, you just got a huge grant that you wrote, that was a competitive grant to support Jacqueline Woodson to come from?
From, it's through Mass Humanities. So it's a grant based on discussion groups, so we are hoping to have this gentleman, his name is Dr. William Smith, and he's out of Wellesley with the Race Amity Center, he's the director there. And we are planning to have him come up and do some speaking in terms of community and also at the high school. And he has this game called Breaking It Down, so it's how to have those difficult conversations in a very positive way. So that should be really exciting. So, so our kickoff is on October 29th, so a little over a week, we have Rob Saret, who's going to be here at the middle school. On November 8th, which is parent conference day, we have a retired teacher from the high school, Diane Lightburn, who's going to be doing four events at the library that kids, because they're out of school, can come and participate in that day, based on four of Jacqueline Woodson's picture books. We have book groups going on in the schools, library, Stevens Library has gotten kits for all of the schools. I'm going to be doing two book groups at the high school with the new principal on two different books, which will be great fun for me, because I used to be a high school person, so it kind of brings me back to that a little bit. Our librarians through the district have been awesome, they have been part of the committee, they're really promoting this work in the schools. We have a high school reading teacher who's doing this work with her kids, we have the ELL teacher at the high school reading some of these books. I know some of the English teachers are doing this, the middle school, the same thing, elementary schools, the same thing. Courtney Ahern and I, one of our elementary librarians, are going to be facilitating a book discussion at the Stevens Coolidge Estate on one of the picture books, which is called, This Is The Rope, and then a big thick book, which I have to finish reading, called The Warmth Of Other Suns, which is about the Great Migration. So we have lots of really cool things going on, so we're very excited about that. So that's that. And last thing about literacy is our elementary librarians. So you see not just Courtney there, you see two other librarians, which is very exciting. So Colleen and Dale are other elementary librarians, and that's them delivering some of the books to the schools from Stevens Library. And I just have to say, the library, the town library has been so generous and so supportive, and they have been a team with us in terms of setting up these events and doing all of this work. It's been a really, really great collaboration, and Kathleen and I are already working on the next thing, so.
And Dale is actually a half-time at Stevens and half-time at Atkinson.
Yes.
Which was our concept of embedded librarian, and we're very, we're, it's early in her tenure, but we think it's a wonderful partnership.
Yeah, yeah. They're just a great group. My fantasy is to be a librarian, so I just, I love them. So, so...
There's still time.
Pardon me?
There's still time.
Not right now.
Right, right. So one of the things I did want to mention is, I know when I was the principal at Thompson, one of the things I used to hear a lot was, we had the summer reading, but nobody, nothing ever really happened with that afterwards. So when at Thompson, we did some things, but we really tried to stretch that across all the schools this year. So we did, in honor of the 100th anniversary of the national parks, we did this thing with the boots, so hiking boots, and kids would bring in the boots to the public library and also to their schools. So if you go into some of the schools, you're going to see the boots starting to hike around the building. And we had a generous donation from Mad Maggie's in terms of just raffling off kids who submitted their reading, they got an ice cream certificate and all of that, so we really wanted to acknowledge that reading. And it's not so much about what kids are reading, but just the kids are reading. Reading, reading, reading is the single most thing that is going to build the literacy in kids. So they've got to have, they've got to have that time with their face on print, so.
We also had five little libraries erected around North Andover, at least, that were reported to me as part of the Superintendent's Summer Challenge, and tons of kids reading a Jacqueline Woodson book.
Right.
And I'm delivering the prizes in the next week or so, so.
I got to pick one of the raffle numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, we'll see that on Twitter.
We will. I have them, so.
I walk by two with my dog every night, actually.
It's pretty cool, huh?
So. And we're, we're actually, there's a group of us, Ian Bait, who is our middle school librarian, her husband is building one, and the literacy ladies are going to be putting one over at the youth center, they've approved that.
Oh, it's a grand idea.
Yes, so we're going to get one up over there sometime in the not-too-distant future. So, so the librarians as well, we're working on some other kinds of ideas, so, for example, November is National Picture Book Month, so they will be using some of Jacqueline Woodson's work, her picture books, in all of the elementary schools. We are talking about doing March, March Book Madness, to go along with March Madness this year, in terms of increasing, you know, kids' reading and excitement around that, some contests around that. We did poetry contests, poetry is still up here from the elementary schools, we're going to do that again. And just some fun things, like I was at a conference this summer, and one of these guys, he blogs about all the new books that are out, he talked about taking pictures and hanging up above the sinks in the bathroom, like about what are new books, or, you know, little book talks and QR codes in the library. So we're talking about doing some of those kind of things to really kind of get kids more excited about reading and get that, get that going. We also, they are media specialists as well, so last December, we did Hour of Code, we're going to do that again this December. They are getting on the Chromebooks, they've used a green screen in a number of the classrooms, tumblebooks, which again is using technology, so we're going to continue to work on that. We talked about the keyboarding piece a little bit again today, like getting, making sure, especially we're doing the map testing, because not all of our kids have that exposure, or if they have that exposure, it's on like an iPhone with the swiping and not on a keyboard, so. And the librarians do have Twitter and blog, so you can always check them out. So that's an update on all things literacy in North Andover.
Exciting.
What were you worried about?
Yeah.
That was your presentation. You didn't listen to me.
Yeah, yeah.
So. It's been, it's been fun, and it's, there's a lot of great energy around that, you know, just getting emails from teachers appreciative of, you know, whether it's the training we did, or some of the coaching that they've received, or the direction that we're moving in, and Jen has been a huge supporter of this right from the beginning, so it makes it all easier when you have all of that, so.
Great, great. Any questions in the committee? Mr. Gross?
Just briefly, fabulous, unbelievable how variety of activities ongoing is amazing, that it went from, gee, we ought to, we were doing it, we'd done it. What are you looking for moving forward towards the rest of the semester in terms of, we're on track, we're making good progress? What's the objective evidence that we're not missing anything on the way?
Well, I can, we will obviously look at the data that we have in terms of reading, especially in the younger grades who are using the foundations.
Okay. Okay.
Piece, SAT, i.e. special needs referrals, those kinds of things. We'll be collecting the writing data in terms of the writing rubrics. And again, they're somewhat subjective, so it's going to take a little bit of time for us to get everybody normed and want, you know, we're going to do it at a building level first. We did look at some preliminary data, so last year, the MCAS, like the fourth grade MCAS did not have a long comp piece.
Right.
But the year prior to that, I had just picked like three, I think it was three fourth grade teachers that I knew had done, been doing the program for a year or two, looked at their scores. All of them had zero percent students in warning, which I thought was pretty interesting. And we need to delve into that a little deeper. Jen and I did look at the district percentage for kids in warning was six percent. So, but those teachers had zero percent. So, I believe it works.
We want to do so. Be more specific, but we look at dibbles. I mean, K to two is dibbles. And then we, because we now have the map, which we can really, and we've been looking at the map, we also looked at MAP RIT scores, I believe they're called.
Yeah, RIT scores, yeah.
And we were to see if we could look at teachers who had done Lucy Cawkins last year. It's a little complicated. We had the map, we were really piloting the map last year, so I believe that the map, and the good thing about map is we give it three times a year, so we can start to see what we'll be looking at mid-year assessment. So there are some, some real concrete things that we can look at and that we've been looking at to, much of that data, we're actually been using to focus our intervention. So the data's being collected. Now we need to look at it overall.
I know when we were very concerned when the reading intervention program was, was removed, that, you know, a percent on grade level, for example, would be dropping, and I think we actually saw that. So it'd be nice to be able to see that these interventions are actually impacting, you know, those meaningful measures.
And one of the things that we're trying to do, like when we did the trainings for the kindergarten and first grade teachers, is really talk about that tier-one intervention.
Yeah.
So what happens to those kids who are general ed students in your classroom, who you see are having trouble? How do you pull them into a small group, and what do you do with them? So how do you give them that extra attention before they become a referral somewhere else, when in many cases, the problem can be remediated right in the classroom by the general ed teachers? So really starting to focus on some of those tools. And part of that is teaching teachers how to manage the whole class while you're doing those kind of groups. And so, you know, it's, so the whole workshop model, the literacy block, the kinds of things we're doing in training, it's not just about, you know, this is the foundations card that you're going to hold up, and this is what you're going to say, but it's really about that whole management of all of that, so.
Which, as you can imagine, I would say will be easier if we can get class sizes down a little bit.
No argument, absolutely no argument.
Ms. Gross?
I'm good, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple things. So, you mentioned, I thought before that it was Lucy Cawkins was K to eight, but you said K to nine?
Well, the progression goes K to nine, but no, there's not like a ninth grade kid.
Right, so that's when they move into ninth grade, you should have, okay.
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit, we talked a lot about elementary school, what's happening with the middle school, and how do you see that going?
Okay. So the middle school does have the kits. Some of the teachers, the very first year, we had the trainings. There were two teachers, two ELA teachers in the middle school who attended. They did have some time together at the end of the summer, and I spent a little bit of time with them. I was at the middle school this week. I met with Joan, we were supposed to meet last week, but we ended up not being able to do that. And so we spent some time brainstorming some ideas about what would be the best way to go around, about some support at the middle school. And we finally hit on something we thought was going to work, and she, this was yesterday, she called me today, and the teachers that she approached around working with me and around this, but also, it's actually going to be an ELA teacher and a history teacher. So we're intertwining the content there as well.
Okay.
Are on board. And so we're going to start to set up some work there and be able to have other teachers come in and observe and spread it out from that.
Because as you said, as they're coming through the elementary school, they're going to come to the middle school with a certain experience and expectation, and if it's not in place, what's going to happen next? So I have some concerns about that.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned all the awesome training that's gone on, so that's great. Do you foresee like mid-year, extra little bits of training, or how do you see the rest of the year for training?
Well, right now, what we're going to focus on are these coaching cycles. We actually go in each building and meet with the grade level teams. So that's going to be the PD. I don't, we'll, we'll be working on the vertical teams. We're going to do some things at Ed Camp, like around conferencing, mentor tax, those kinds of things. Whether we're going to do any sort of large-scale PD like we did, I'm not sure. That was quite an undertaking.
Yes, no, I understand.
Both from the trainer and also from, I mean, Jen, Greg, all of, all central office, they were, they were on the sub-list. So just to try to get that kind of coverage was huge.
Right, right. But so basically, if people feel they need certain brush-ups on things, they can contact you and-
Yes, and we, and we'll, like, we have a couple of teachers that we're just going to go over now with before we even started that. So I think people are seeing us as approachable in that way. The other thing is, we will have, not as many as we did last year, but we will have some more like before-school or after-school PD sessions too that teachers can access.
Great, okay.
I would also say, having attended the workshop with Lucy Cawkins this Monday, you know, really, the help comes when you're doing it in the classroom.
Right, that's why I was wondering.
So to go to the fourth grade team at Atkinson and sit with them in the beginning of their, of them doing a unit on small moments, and then be with them in the middle and be them at the end, that is what has been proven to be the most helpful.
Because it's, it's concrete.
Because it's right there. And, you know, I think also what's been really helpful, and Lucy Cawkins actually modeled this for us, is actually having a member of our team go in and actually, you know, model how to do the mini lesson to get the kids set up. And the other great thing is, is we have people who kind of are mentors, really, in each of the schools have been doing this for a bunch of years. So how to access those folks. So, you know, kind of the training all in a room, we saw on TV is one thing, but what, what really has been proven to be effective is get into the classrooms, get into the space with the teachers. And that's why this coaching model that we have just makes so much sense.
That's good. But the fact that people are making use of that and are comfortable with that, that's really good.
And the principals are very clear that this is important, so they're helping us figure out times for-
Good, okay.
Yeah, they've been great. I got, I sent out the email, and I got all the times, so we're going to schedule that, yeah.
That's good, okay.
They've been, principals have been wonderful.
And the last thing, you said you mentioned some case studies, it sounds interesting what you're looking at. Are they our actual students' experiences?
Our actual students, yes.
Not some document?
No, no, so that we can start to really look at the students we have that are perplexing and we're, you know, and put all our heads together and see what we can do.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lou.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of questions. The foundations versus Lucy Cawkins and the K through two, is it complementary, or are they, does one replace the other, or how does that work?
Okay, so the foundations is really teaching those early literacy skills.
Yes.
So the phonemic awareness, all of those pieces, sound, letter-sound relationship. And the Lucy Cawkins piece that we're talking about now is writing. I hope that sometime in the future, we may be talking about more with the reading, but right now, we're talking about writing specifically.
So they're just complementary?
Yes, and they all fit into the literacy block, so.
You just made a comment in passing about gifted and talented. Can you just say two more sentences about how teachers can help gifted and talented students who are excellent?
Can I just, one comment, I really struggle with gifted and talented, because I, I just, well, I just worry that when we start to put that into the lexicon, I think, you know, all of our students are gifted and talented in some way. So I would say kids who find it easier or are able to write more quickly-
They maybe have a talent in the area of writing.
Thank you, Mr. Limpert. It's a personal thing.
I know, I understand. You think, we just, that's what we call it.
Always gets smart kids, though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We get-
But I think all of our kids are smart and aware.
No, 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 I certainly agree with that.
That's what they called it when I went to special ed training.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understand. And, and I agree, languages, the words are really important. I don't disagree with that.
I learned from a former sped director here, because when I, again, when I went to, through school, special ed, it was always special ed, regular ed, and I don't call it regular ed anymore, I call it general ed. Because what is irregular then? You know, that whole term, so, yeah, so it is, language is important. So, but in the, in each of the kids that each of the teachers have, there's what's called a pathways book, and in the pathways book is a learning progression. It goes all the way from PK, pre-K, up through, as I said, grade nine. And it talks about development, convention, structure, and there are different pieces under each of those. So you're not going to have a student who's going to be, to be writing straight down the line on that rubric. There may be some strengths and some areas that they need to work on for the, you know, for each student. But if you have a student who's in fourth grade, and they have a lot of strengths, and they may be writing their narrative piece, really scoring around the fifth or sixth grade range on that rubric, there are, there are very specific points that move that writing forward. So what do you do with the details? What do you do with the dialogue? What do you do with the theme to make it a higher-level piece? And that information is right there for the teachers to be able to take and help confer with the student and move them ahead.
In addition to just straight keyboarding skills, in the, sort of the K through five area, are there examples of technology? You know, now that we have all this wonderful technology in, you know, Chromebooks and carts and all of that, and we're going to have model classrooms everywhere, how's, you know, how does that sort of fit into what you're doing?
Well, one of the pieces of technology, it's, and I'll talk about the Chromebook in a minute, but another piece of technology that is really important that is now in those classrooms is a document camera. Because feedback is really the single most important thing in terms of timely, effective, targeted feedback that you give students. And when you put a piece of work up, that you're, say you're doing a shared writing piece, and you put that piece of work up, and you talk about what's happening, or a student brings their work up to share, and you talk about what's happening there, and give feedback, that's immediate, and that's available for all the students. So the document cameras are a real strength in terms of that. Some of our technology people went to the MasQ Conference yesterday. So I already have an email, Kathy Detroit was talking to me about some programs that they heard about yesterday and explaining to me, and she sent me some information I can share with teachers around writing and being able to track the revisions that students make in their writing, and not just, you know, we know we can do that on a Google Doc right now, but this has some other really interesting ways to track that. And also, like, she was talking about a voice feedback, so, you know, for a teacher, you have to think of the feedback, you're writing it, and to be able to just think and say, it's going to be more effective for a lot of teachers in terms of time. So they, they saw some really cool things too that they can, that we're going to share and take a look at.
What grade is that person?
Um, she is one of our tech integrators, yeah, yeah, yeah. And she was actually at the middle school today. And she was actually working with this teacher in the special ed department, so around some of that.
I would just say, in passing, that I'm impressed by not only the breadth, but the depth of the work that you're doing. I think that's really impressive. And I think we, you know, it certainly sounds like we have, you know, we're going to be very close to now finally normalizing our curriculum across our elementary schools, which we've worked on for a long time, and it sounds like we're making some serious progress. So thank you very much for all of that. That's great.
Well, thank you for all of your support. You know, it wouldn't be happening if everybody wasn't behind that, so.
Great presentation. You've definitely earned it.
Thank you.
I saw Ms. Marks, she sat there around four o'clock, and she was a little bit nervous about coming for the board event.
Amy was laughing when she came in. She said, "How did they ever get you to go on that video?"
I couldn't, I took a picture of her when she was coming to this position, and we had a cake, and I took pictures, I don't want to be in the picture.
I didn't give her a choice.
No, she didn't.
That was ambush.
No.
Camera's rolling, come here.
Spoke right off the topic, thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ms. Marks.
Okay, a couple more items to go. An update on the district board certified behavior analysis and behavior technician model.
Dr. Straight.
Dr. Straight.
So I'm going to introduce our colleague, Sarah Clifford, if you want to come on up. Sarah is our board certified behavior analyst.
You may just have to scroll.
Hit the arrow button. All right. Just hit the arrow. Thank you. Yep. All right, do you want to introduce yourself to the committee?
Sure, yes. My name's Sarah Clifford, and I am a board certified behavior analyst, and I am also a licensed applied behavior analyst with the state of Massachusetts. I have been a behavior analyst for about four years now, and I started my work in Georgetown for three years, and here I am now. I have many, many years of experience working under many different BCBA's throughout the state. I have a variety of different work experience in homes as well. So thank you for having me to North Andover, and it's been a pleasure so far, and I'm very happy to be here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So we just wanted to take some time and really update you on what's happening. As you're well aware, there was the transition program that was here in North Andover, and after careful analysis by the former special education director, Leanne Carbone, Dr. Price, and some of the other members on the staff, the decision was made that that probably wasn't the most effective method of including students in the classroom and ensuring that they have access to the general curriculum. So out of that came the concept of providing services through a district BCBA, which would be Ms. Clifford here, and working with behavior technicians. And behavior technicians are really distinctive from a teacher assistant, a TA, paraprofessional, some people might think of them, because it's based specifically on some of the very particular trainings that they receive, centered on student behavior, student emotions, how to conduct applied behavior analysis, collecting data, working directly with the specific students for the needs that they have. So we did quite a bit of training over the summer with those folks, and we're going to talk to you a little bit about that with the goal of including these kids in the classroom. And I think the important distinction here that I just want to say again is that this is a service, not a program. We want the students in the classroom with their typical peers making that appropriate progress.
Just a little bit of the history, Dr. Straight, is this came out of Dorsey Urely's report last year, if you remember. And then we did sign the memorandum of agreement with the teachers' union last year to create the BTA positions. So just a little context. And Dorsey felt like this program, the transition program specifically, was very, it was hard for us to define it, entrance, exit, and that, and this model, one that I'm comfortable with, one that I knew, one that Dr. Straight knew, we have found to be successful in other districts.
So Sarah was brought aboard to be the district BCBA for us, and through that, she has gone and developed some very significant trainings for the behavior technicians. So what I'd like to do is just turn it over to Ms. Clifford to kind of detail some of those pieces for you.
Sure. So I worked with six behavior techs over the summer. I was able to work with them for about a week, for 25 hours. We covered a variety of different techniques that really focused on applied behavior analysis methodologies. So I broke it down into natural environment teaching versus individualized teaching, because knowing that this was the inclusion model, most likely, the most appropriate teaching strategy that they were used would be the natural environment teaching. And really focusing on those incidental opportunities that they would probably come across with daily living skills, with social skills instruction, and then also with the academic instruction. So I discussed how to support their students within the inclusion setting as far as the academic components are concerned, how to break tasks down into small manageable chunks, because it's really easy to say, "Break tasks down into small manageable chunks," but without really showing them and giving them examples as to what they actually look like, it's a little different. So I took a lot of time, and I gave them a variety of different activities to do within the class, so it was really a hands-on training when we were there. This is just an example, this is just a probe data sheet that I was teaching them how to use on some very basic instruction that they might see within the classroom. It's a simple data sheet, a plus or a minus, I didn't want to scare them at first. Did a couple of those, and then I moved on to something like this, which is also called task analysis. And this really breaks stuff down into manageable chunks, like when we're talking about toothbrushing or brushing our hair, or, you know, going to the bathroom, for example. All of those skills can be broken down into steps. I may not need 25 steps, but the child that they're working with may need 25 steps, and that's okay. So I was able to go through the different types of data collection with them based on the students that I thought that they would be working with this year. And I had the hands-on experience, so that I was able to walk around and follow them and say, "You know what, why don't you try it this way instead?" Or, you know, "This really looks like, this might be challenging, so can you pair up with somebody else?" And the BTs who came to the training were so receptive and so eager to learn all of this information that when I was done with the training, which was in-person and online as well, I felt like I was just pushing my birds out of the nest. It was really a great bonding experience, but also a really great opportunity to teach them these skills that they're going to need this year. I was also able to train them specifically on discreet trial training. Some of the BTs that I had that were there, they already had discreet trial training specifically. However, I gave them a variety of different discreet trial programs. My programs look a little different than another BCBA's or another BCBA's. So, I wanted to give them a variety, just in case. You know, it's really good to have as much training as possible so that if I was to give them, you know, a program that perhaps they weren't familiar with, they would at least know the familiar parts and be able to pick it up. So, I didn't want to just give them generic information. I wanted to give them a variety. I was able to train them specifically on how to collect data on a variety of different tasks. And then, say over here, then we also talked about the social skills instruction and what that would look like. So, the social skills instruction was really, you're going to be assisting them on the playground and here are some examples as to what you might see. The glory of my position is that I get to go into each school. I get to go into the elementary schools and I get to consult directly with the teachers and the special education teachers along with the administration. So, we really get a good, clear picture as to what's going on in each one of these classrooms. So, if there's something that's going on that, you know, they're having a challenge with, I can go into the class and I can talk to the BTA and I can say, "What's going on?" Get their take. Look at the data because now they've been trained in the data collection. I can review that and have a better opinion or have a better recommendation without actually having to be in that classroom all day long doing observations because they're doing that for me and they're very trained in it. So, that's, that's been a really positive aspect of this model. I can also get in there and if a BT is struggling a little bit with a specific concept, I'm able to get in there and do that hands-on training, which has also been a really helpful strategy for the behavior techs and as well as the general education teachers. I think making myself visible as much as possible, just to know that, you know, here's this model, but there's also somebody who's making sure that, you know, we're following up with that and the BTs aren't just off on their own. I think that that's really been something positive with this model as well. So, it's a new model. We're really excited and all the people who are part of it are so excited to be doing it. They love the students. They love the staff. Obviously, there's a few kinks as we get through it, but I think we're working along with it as successfully as possible, so.
And Ms. Clifford's also constructed some online trainings to go along with some of the hands-on in-person trainings as well. We are, her staff is able to go in, do some readings, do some observations, record their thoughts, share their information with the other PTs on the online module, which has been highly effective. We've also taken a look at because the kids are pushed into the inclusive setting, how can we support those teachers, special education teachers, classroom teachers, related service providers and the TAs that are in the classroom for all of the other kids. And during some of the PD days or early release times, Ms. Clifford has provided some professional development for those folks as well. So, that again, we're looking at being inclusive and we're looking, going across the board, not just focusing in a silo on, "Okay, this is your job and these are the kids you're working at, but how can we apply that across the board?" So, we're really looking at other ways of expanding that as well to pull people in so that we don't necessarily always have to have a certain specific service, but if the more students that we have and teachers trained in these techniques, the more effective it will be across the general setting as well.
And they're already doing, the teachers are actually already doing a lot of these classroom management strategies that are really effective for all students. So, I think when they hear inclusion model, I think, you know, there was a little bit of angst, but as I've been able to work with them and get a lot of training in there for them, I did a specific training for some staff over at Sargent who were wonderful. They were so receptive to all of this information, so it was awesome. And it just validated everything that they were already doing. So, it was really positive and I got a lot of positive feedback from that. The BTs are thrilled. They, they've been getting amazing feedback from the general education teachers and the level of training that they have, you know, I feel teachers in the classrooms are comfortable enough to go to the behavior techs and say, "Hey, is that, you know, is that the best approach? Or what do you think about that approach, you know, over here? Let's try this." So, they're very open to that, you know, it's a team approach.
Right. And included in that, you can talk a little bit about the functional behavior assessments and the behavior plans that you construct as well?
Sure. So, part of my job is to conduct the functional behavior assessments. In the past, it's been the school psychologist's job to conduct the functional behavior assessments. The purpose of doing an FBA is to really find the function of challenging behaviors that's impacting the student's academic progress or those around them. So, I go in and I do a series of observations. I collect the data, which I love. I get to interview a variety of different staff and find out, you know, what's motivating this child, what's not motivating this child, what are some really key areas that we could probably, you know, those are the problem areas. What are the areas where he's most likely to succeed? So, with that information, I'm able to get a true function of the challenging behavior and from that function, I'm able to write a function-based behavior plan, which is really important to have a function-based behavior plan because you can really treat the behavior rather than just writing a general positive behavior support plan. There's four functions of behavior, so they all vary on, in different supports that you would put in place for those. So, having the BTs in the classroom, if they're working with a student who requires some significant data collection for the FBA, they are able to already collect that for me. Part of the training that I did for sergeant staff and then along with some of the other staff that I've been working closely with, I've been able to teach them how to collect data for ABCs. It's just an acronym for antecedent behavior consequence. So, with that, I have a variety of different teachers around the district already collecting ABC data so that if there is a need for a functional behavior assessment, we're one step closer and it's just, it's just direct observation data and we may not even need to do the FBA. So, it's a very time-consuming process, but at least it's one step. Maybe we can cut it off before there's actually a need for that and it gets to that crisis level, so.
Exactly.
So, just to take a moment here.
Yes.
This is the type of work that keeps kids attending the North Andover public schools.
I just want to be clear that this is the level of the work. You know, we talk about keeping kids within our schools. This is what it is. You know, getting it before it becomes a crisis.
Right.
You know, this is kind of, you know, this is how we, how we change our pattern, if that makes sense, you know?
We do a lot of training in antecedent management behavior, so it's really looking at how we can set the environment in an appropriate way for that child to be successful. But not only that child, it's for all of the children. So, all of the training that I'm doing is not specific to the children that I'm, I'm working specifically with. It's for teachers. It's, it's for them to know that these are all of their children, which they firmly believe in, so it doesn't necessarily need to be tailored to that one student. It's appropriate for all of them and I think that's really important in all the training and the work that I've done so that they know, like, I'm not just here to dictate and say, "This is what's going to work for this child" and push the other ones aside. It's really all about the classroom in general, all of the students in there and what's going to help all of those students be successful throughout the school day. So, again, everyone has been nothing but receptive and open to any of the feedback that I've given them. I have classroom management checklists that I've handed out and when I come in to do observations for my students, these are the things that I'm looking at and these are wonderful strategies to use for all of your students. And I think that was a really good approach to take as well because I think they, they really sat back and they're like, "Oh, wait a minute. You're not just here for a specific student. You're here for me and all of these students." So, really just changing a little bit of a mindset and not even changing it, but just giving them information to know who I am and what, and what I'm capable and what the BTs are capable of doing.
And how we can help. And, you know, we discussed looking at generalizing across settings and that includes the home environment as well. So, another important component is really the parent consultation piece where Sarah is able to consult with the parents and provide some, you know, tips and how to work with your child and share what is working here and how can that work in your home. For some of our most needier students, we also do in-home training and what it really is is parent training. So, Sarah's also hitting up that piece where we're really looking at what do we have in place right now? We do a lot of outside consultations and pushing those services outside. And what we want to do is bring that back in so that we're providing that for our kids so that we're working hand-in-hand. The staff here in North Andover is working directly with the parents and our BTs, our BCBA's are pushing into the home. So, we're all talking the same language and so for the parents and the kids, be able to adapt that to not just the school setting, but the home setting and then generalize it out, whether you're going to the grocery store or a restaurant or those different pieces. So, that's our next big project. So, part of the BT training also includes that home piece and how to work in the home and what does that look like and transfer those skills here.
Ms. Clifford, how many students would you say that these six BTs are currently supporting?
About fourteen to fifteen, fifteen students, yeah. And they are at all of the elementary schools, I believe. Yep.
Could you talk about how the kids are actually identified and how that first goes down with the parents?
I wasn't a part of the first identification process.
So, I can say that for the vast majority of the kids that fall into this segment, they're identified through the ECC. So, these are students who come to us for early intervention and they're part of our more intensive programs at the ECC. So, the concept of the transition program was kids who were leaving our ECC transitioning into kindergarten, but a class with a single TA wasn't going to be enough, so we created the transition program. So, for the vast majority of these specific students, they were identified very early in life. Parents have, by the time they get to kindergarten, this is something parents have been talking, thinking about for three to four years.
And so far, the parents have been amazing.
receptive, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I think a lot of the parents are excited by the fact that their kids get to attend their homeschool. So, in the past, these kids all went to Franklin and so now these kids are going to kindergarten when we aren't moving around because of other issues of class sizes.
Right.
Are going to kindergarten with the kids on the street. Or first grade with kids on the street or second grade.
I think that's a really important point, too, is that keeping the kids in their homeschool is really important, especially if they have connections rather than moving them to another school, so. Right.
Absolutely, Mr. Gross.
So, the BTs are building a sign and under the supervision of the principal or are they a resource under supervision of student services? How's that work?
Well, that's a really good question in general for the whole student services department. So, we really work hand-in-hand and collaborate. So, technically, if you think about it in terms of who's really directing their work, that would be Sarah, the district BCBA, because she's the person with the expertise and the knowledge. And of course, you know, we recognize and value that this is the building of the principal who's running the school and he has certain, you know, responsibilities that he has to adhere to. So, we work collaboratively with them. But generally speaking, Sarah does a lot of collaboration with the principals, working with them to discuss the students, discuss the BTs, discuss the approach that's happening in the classroom, the types of trainings and pushing in that she can do. We're starting to extend her a little bit and being cautious in how we do that, setting parameters to push into some other classes that, where we find there's some challenging behaviors, where maybe the teacher needs some support in there. So, she's going, she's going in and doing some observations and providing some input. So, just sort of expanding that whole approach a little bit. Again, and, you know, I go back to what Ms. Marks said as well, looking at how can we grab these kids early and do what needs to happen to keep them in their schools and in their classrooms.
As you can imagine, Mr. Gross, it has not taken long for people in the district to want Ms. Clifford to help them.
Yes. Much of the work that we're doing right now is trying not to burn her out.
Exactly.
Thank you.
We don't want to do that.
So, I mean, that's a good question. So, we're really looking at putting some constraints around, you know, who's applicable. We started with those transition program kids. We don't want a program because we want those kids integrated, so it's really a service. So, let's get this moving. Let's get this rolling, you know, meet the needs of these kids that oftentimes it's kids with developmental delays in significant areas. And then as we're growing this and we're feeling comfortable and we know that the behavior technicians know what they're doing, the teachers, the administrators are all comfortable. We're looking at expanding Sarah's role to help others. But again, understanding that she's also developing the home services program as well.
And that'd be my concern is that as the success of the program starts to get traction, the demands of the services will be in big demand.
Very valid point.
Thank you.
These, the technicians are, they stick with the students they're assigned to? That they have a sort of a permanent assignment with one or two students or whatever that works?
Yes, they do. Yep. And I am thinking about, for some of them, making a switch maybe mid-year or probably towards the end of the year, not because they're not, you know, putting, doing what they need to do, but more so that the students that they're with don't become too reliant on them. So, it's really good to generalize skills across different people and different settings. So, it's, it's all part of the model. But obviously, I wouldn't take someone off of a student who, you know, was, was in crisis or really needed that familiar staff. So, just thinking about it carefully.
And this seems to be about the right complement of technicians for the number of students that you're dealing with. I mean, there seems like enough.
Well.
We're making it work.
We're making it work.
Good answer.
And I think that the challenge is as the program is demonstrating success with these students, many of the other, the principals are identifying other students for whom this model would be useful.
Absolutely.
Which is a very good segue to our next agenda item because the reality of the situation is we could only do this in a way that we thought we could afford it for this year. Because the way that this program really works is bringing down our out-of-district costs and taking those funds and bringing them back into our, but that's going to take some time because it's very challenging, once a kid leaves our district, to actually get them back in a meaningful, sustained way. So, the idea here is to be keeping these kids in district.
Before we segue.
So, I just wanted to say that. I just wanted to say, that's, we'll talk about the money. It's really the money that's the issue.
One last question. So, is there criteria or what?
Who makes the decision when a kid doesn't need the BT anymore?
That's an excellent question. We haven't got, I don't think we've, we've come to that conclusion yet, however. We, it's really in North Andover that's still a part of the piece that we're establishing because it is so new. It's only, you know, barely two months into its inception here. But historically, what you do is you set up a specific exit criteria and much of it is based on the types of behaviors that you see from the child or the developmental levels and what is the need for that BT to support them. And then Sarah can talk to you a little bit about the fading back of those supports or the fading back of that prompting and what that looks like and, you know, how you can pull away. You know, maybe you start with more structured settings within the classroom, keep the behavior technician with the child in the unstructured settings of recess or lunchtime or, you know, a lot of those areas where they're really going to have a lot of integration problems because of the socialization piece that they don't have the capacity necessarily to keep up with or their perceptions that they're not understanding what's happening and they really need more fully supported in those specific areas. And then as those skills develop and as they mature naturally, you start pulling back a little more, fading the BT and transitioning.
And getting the parents to buy into that as well.
Yes, and again, the parent consultation piece is significant. So, one of the other things Sarah, Ms. Clifford will do is attend IEP team meetings so that she can really fully explain the science behind what's happening and how that can be integrated in the home and how the parent, through trainings and consultations, can mirror what's happening there and bring that into the outside settings as well.
And that could also be done in the home. You could go to the family and do some of that there.
Absolutely. Home assessments is part of my position as well.
And we hire the behavior technicians. Part of the deal was that they could work additional hours beyond the school day in the home.
I see.
I guess to echo Mr. Tracy, I would also assume that some of these students are going to age out of the program for, for some of them as they develop maturity and coping capabilities. So, it's not, I can imagine this is not going to be, you've got a BT until you graduate.
Absolutely not, yeah. The goal is, like, like Dr. Straight said, would definitely be to fade those support services back and really front loads of services now while they're in the inclusion setting. And then really, part of their job is to collect data to prove that they're meeting their objectives, their social, their behavior, their classroom participation so that we'll be able to really have that objective data to make that decision as to whether or not it's time to fade it back. With the idea that you're fading it back consistently and that's really what your goal is, your long-term goal is, is not to just have a person attached to these children all day long, so.
Seeing no further questions, could we segue into the meat of it all?
So, just a quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Just kind of a 40,000-foot view of this. So, last year when we dissolved, moved the transition program into this new service delivery kind of approach, we were able to hire Ms. Clifford because we had a teacher associated with the transition program. We also had some teaching assistants, four teaching assistants associated with the program. When we knew we were going to need to do this, we had to kind of think creatively about how we were going to get the six behavior technicians that we needed. And I just wanted to talk through that a little bit with you. And then also, we had a student that we have tuitioned in. So, one thing that we will continue to do more of is tuition students in from other districts who are on IEPs and require significant special education services. It's definitely a model that I've talked to you guys about. We, I strongly believe that a lot of what we're doing, other districts would pay to have their kids come here. So, we transitioned, we did tuition a student at the middle school. So, and then we had one student move into schools, our schools, this, this summer, September, into a second grade classroom and it was immediately clear. I think I was in the room with Dr. Straight and the principal within a week and a half of school that we needed a behavior technician for this student. So, again, this is a kid we would have moved to the program and now we're able to keep in their homeschool. So, the reality of the situation is we, we have it in the budget for four and we really, because of the two additionals needed as a program, we have the one move-in student and the one tuitioned in. We need eight. And they actually are working K to eight at the, I forget where the middle school, six?
Six.
Six, six, six. So, how are we proposing to pay for that? So, we knew that we would have some turnover savings. So, we had $72,000 in turnover savings, something we always know is there. This, we have charging $35,000 tuition for the student. You know, our per pupil expense is 12, but given that the student needed the level of support that we're providing, we negotiated with the sending district a $35,000, which frankly is cheaper for the defending district than a lot of other out-of-district placements. And we believe, I will just as a side note, I think there are places within the North Andover public schools where this model will work moving forward, tuitioning kids in.
The way the student gets to stay in a public setting, you know, oftentimes you may not have a large enough population of a student with a specific low incident type of disability. So, you can't maybe develop a program or you haven't developed a program well enough in your particular district. So, districts will, you know, come to us to provide the services that we have because we have some very well-developed programs here.
And last year, we contracted out to a firm called Creative Behavior Solutions approximately $160,000 in home services and BCBA support, which we feel we can dramatically reduce and potentially get very, very low over a few years. So, if a student needed personal support at home, we had a BCBA coming into our ECC. We had a BCBA from Creative Behavior Solutions, doing a lot of the work that Ms. Clifford's doing. And we won't be able to eliminate that at all because obviously families have a relationship with Creative Behavior Solutions, so we're not going to just pull that away, but we are going to move.
Transition.
Transition. It's a much, much more cost-effective model for us to be providing that support. And we also believe the homeschool connection is stronger if the person who's supporting the kid in the school who's supporting the kid in the school is supporting them at home.
It mirrors the methodology, the language, all of those pieces. That's really important because when you use an outside agency that way, although it can be convenient when it's difficult to find somebody that's specific, you're also not necessarily on the same page. And again, consistency, generalization for the student is the best approach.
So we had, um, we funded Creative Behavior Solutions in two ways. We funded approximately forty thousand dollars of that contracted service through our, um, general fund and then we, uh, funded a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars through a two-forty grant. So the only number that we've put in here is thirty-nine thousand dollars through the general fund. We are confident we will have less, uh, less at least forty thousand dollars on that contract this year. Um, I think that's a, a, a very safe estimate.
Mm-hmm.
Question?
Yeah.
Is the, um, tuition in cost neutral?
So the tuition in i- is, um, cost neutral. So what, what do you mean? So it's costing us a twenty?
Service consumption offsets the, um, the tuition, uh, tuition into the, into the district.
So the tuition in costs us twenty thousand dollars and a behavior technician, but we are charging thirty-five. So, um, that was kind of the money for the behavior technician plus our per pupil expense.
Okay.
Um, however, as you know, each kid doesn't come with twelve thousand dollars. So, um, it, it's, it's money that's coming in and it can be used as we see fit. So in, in essence, it's really covering the cost of two BTs for one kid.
Good. And that's, that's what I expected.
We're making money off of it.
Where it's, it's minimally cost neutral.
Minimally. Um, so, that being said, um, because of these additions, we are requesting, and this is just the first reading, four additional behavior technician positions be funded, um, with each of the positions. And this is the part that stuns all of us is these are twenty thousand dollar a year positions. These people who are doing all the work that, um, Ms. Clifford talked about, but they are teaching assistants, behavior technicians. Uh, as you remember, they get a dollar an hour more than our teaching assistants. Um, so the cost of those four additionals are eighty thousand dollars. If you'll see, we, um, are projecting a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, so we are not even dipping into all of this, um, which is also hopefully creating some, some cushion space for us if other children need this level of support. So that's how we are talking about funding these in a thoughtful manner. Um, so.
As, as Superintendent mentioned, this is only the first reading. So are there any questions that, um, will help people decide, um, how they're going to go on this neck for next time? Are there specific questions that, that you want to answer? We have a lot of people around us that could probably.
I, I just, I, I'm not clear on the, on the actual facts. I, I thought you said we had six technicians.
So we current, like, so we currently have six. Let me explain that, too. So we had four funded in the budget.
Yep.
Um, since we were building this program, we added, had to add two, which we've done through kind of our sub-line currently. And then we need two more. So we, we have six, two already added, two were requested, we're actually requesting to add the people.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and I think I talked about this last spring, that, you know, as you build a new approach here, there's going to be some squishiness in how we built it.
These full-time employees with benefits?
Yep, full-time employees with benefits, which is obviously an attractive part of the job.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. So, the parents, do they have to buy in with the proposal that we're making to, like, especially with this Creative Behavior Solutions group, to take our suggestion and work with our BT and back away or how, how do they weigh in on this process?
Okay, so, for the school piece, where we're looking at the transition program went away, we brought in the district BCBA and.
ECC.
The BTs. That conversation with parents happened at the team meetings.
Okay.
At the table while developing the IEP. So it was explained to the parents, you know, why the approach was changing, what the benefits to the child would be and what the expected outcomes are through the IEP goals.
Okay.
So that's the first piece. The second piece is, when we suggest and provide home training services to any parent, they receive the service. They don't necessarily, um, get to choose who's giving the service. Now, what we want to do, as Dr. Price has mentioned, is we want to honor and respect the fact that there may be some relationship building that has gone on. So we're not going to just say, sorry, we're taking that person out of your home, he has somebody else you're gonna love him.
Right.
We're going to.
Take a little longer.
Right, exactly. So what Sarah's been doing is, and this all occurs after school hours, um, she goes into the home to form a relationship, to meet the family, to meet the child, see the child in their home environment setting and start transitioning that way, what's been happening, put eyes on what's going on there, and then start transitioning the new person into the home. So, you know, we're doing it thoughtfully, so we're not upsetting people or pulling the rug out from out of.
And some of the Creative Behavior Solutions contracted services were actually for BCBA supports to come into our schools, which we no longer need.
Right, correct. Correct.
And do, do parents ever ask for that home services that you don't necessarily feel are necessary? Like, how, how does, do they ever ask, is it usually you suggesting it or do people sometimes say?
It can go either way. And again, it's a team decision that happens at the, um, IEP meeting. So in some cases, you know, parents might think that that's a service that they need or they might be confused as to what home training actually is. And truly what home training is, is parent training. So what we're doing is working with the parents specifically so that they understand how to work with their child in the home. And maybe mirror some of the things that we're teaching the child, whether it's socialization, um, daily living skills like toileting, um, so that when the child's in the home, the parent is comfortable and has the tools and resources that they need. So really, that's what it is. Some people misconstrue it and think of it as more of, um, babysitting or extended school tutoring things. That is not what it is at all. So we really are explicit about that and the, the approach to take two is to really have a contract with the parents so that you sit down and explicitly say, here's what it is, we want you to understand what happens, we scheduled it, you know, when we can, because again, it is after school hours. And the parent will read the contract, sign the contract of their understanding. So we make sure there's really clear expectations there. Um, so there's a really formal approach to it. But it really does occur, who needs it at the IEP table. So not everybody who wants home training is going to receive home training. And sometimes we do suggest it. Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
A home assessment would really get, get a good gauge as to where the skill deficits are and what the needs are of the child and of the parent. And then at the team meeting, then I would present the home assessment, assess the needs, and then make my recommendations based on that at, at the meetings, so the team can decide, you know, is this, is this approaching necessary or are these number of hours appropriate?
And in the past, the person making that assessment might be from the place that we were contracting the services from.
Right, right. So now it would not be.
Right, got it.
So have you had an opportunity to visit all fifteen homes so far?
Not yet, no, but I am currently working with a child who is not, um, one of those fifteen students, um, within the district. And, um, I was able to successfully begin that relationship with the, with the family, um, and do some excellent work within the home. Great family.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's the first ring. We'll take that up, uh, on the other two there. Yep, great. Okay, that's the last item on our agenda. We'll go back to public comment if there's anyone from the public. Ms. Marx wants to have a.
Thank you.
For performance, you're good?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, that's the agenda for today. So I want to say thank you very much for today. I think it was a great meeting and I appreciate.
Welcome back.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry, I apologize. We'll go around and.
Just real quick, as I mentioned, we had our first health advisory committee meeting yesterday, yesterday.
Yes.
So, um, led a, very successfully and, uh, with, with Nurse Brezilak leading the group. Uh, Dr. Straight was there, um, Cara from the police department was there, most of the nurses, et cetera, uh, health department and community, um, community center membership. It's absolutely amazing how much is being done in this community on, on health advisory. Um, just a heads up for this group, we will probably have to look at a couple of policy reviews based on new regulatory requirements. Um, there's one on wellness district program and two or three others that will be coming our way shortly. And, um, I just wanted to mention that the, you know, the highlights of things going on, including all the, um, the nutrition and wellness activities, uh, the food rescue program is continuing to expand and, um, there's actually, you know, a lot of brainstorming with the group to bring that to the community center with some of the surplus foods, which makes perfect sense. Uh, it's just, it was just very rewarding and exciting to be a participant. A couple of quick updates, um, I think tomorrow at the, uh, football game and then Saturday ten to two at CVS at First and Main, a no questions asked drug take-back table would be provided to empty your, um, your medicine cabinets of unneeded and expired medications in a safe and effective method.
I should say the locations and times.
At the football game at, at Joe Wall Stadium tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday.
Yes.
And also CVS at First and Main between ten and two.
On Saturday.
On Saturday, correct. Um, again, the drug take-back program of, uh, safely disposing of unneeded medications. There's also a, a, a drop at the police station, um, up across from sixteen hundred, uh, Osgood as well. So a couple of things. I don't know if there's any, um, any other update. You were also a participant in that?
I was and I, I just really like to echo what you said. It was so impressive to sit there with that group of people and really listen to everything that is happening. It was just phenomenal. And the cohesiveness and collaboration across all of the different town facilities, all of our different departments here within the school. It was just really impressive what's happening, not just for our kids, but for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well?
Uh, I actually participated in the food rescue. Uh, they started rolling out at Thompson, uh, this past week and, um, off to a really great start. Definitely need more volunteers, though, if anybody's hanging out, watching, um, could use, because it's a very short amount of time, but, uh, it, um, it's off to a good start. It's a good idea.
Superintendent?
No, great, thank you.
Just mentioned town hall is, uh, town offices are closed tomorrow because they're moving to, back to Main Street, uh, opening on Monday. So if you're gonna, I know Superintendent mentioned early voting.
Doesn't start on Monday.
Doesn't start on Monday and it starts back on Main Street, so. All right then, that's it. Adjourned. Motion, I'm sorry, I can't just slam the go, huh?
Don't do that.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't do adjourn the end.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Gross, second by Mr. Limbert to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Those know the eyes have it. Now it. Thank you, everybody.